Check, check, check. Check, check, check.
Yeah.
Today's Thursday, January 9th, 2005. The time is 1:30 PM and currently there are six board members present. Unfortunately, Member Cusack will not be joining us today. She was recovering from a serious accident which she's still recovering from and we wish the best to Ruth. Before proceeding further, I'd like the board members and department staff to introduce themselves, department staff to introduce themselves and their staff. And I'll start off with the board members. Go ahead, Jake.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Jake Fletcher, Takitna.
Good afternoon, everybody. Jake Garner, Anchorage.
Good afternoon, staff and board members and public. My name is David Loring from Fairbanks.
Yep, good afternoon, members of the public, staff and board members. My name's Al Baratton from Fairbanks.
Good afternoon, staff and board members, public. My name is Jim Bechtel. I'm from Thorn Bay, Alaska.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, board members. And I'm Stash Hoffman. I currently reside in Bethel. And now let's go to department heads. I'll start off with the commissioner.
Yeah, Doug Vincent, Commissioner, Alaska Department of Fish and Game. Thank you for your service and coming to the meeting.
Ryan.
Good afternoon, members of the board, those listening online and members of the public who are joining us. My name is Ryan Scott. I'm the Director of the Division of Wildlife Conservation out of Juneau. And with me today, we have Tim Peltier, our Region Four Supervisor, and Natalie Weber, our Regulation Program Coordinator. And throughout the week, we're going to have, as you can imagine, many, many other staff members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Dr. Amy Wida.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amy Wida, I'm the Head of Subsistence for the Fishing Game. And good afternoon, everyone here joining us today in Wasulla, members of the board, public listening online. And I will have more staff coming this evening and tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Amy. And we'll move on to George.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see the board members, public staff. George Pappas, Office of Subsistence Management, State Subsistence Liaison, Department of Interior, Secretaries' Office, Policy Management and Budget. And there's something else there, too. It's new. We're going to have, we have Orville Lind, our statewide native liaison for the Office of Subsistence Management here. Also, I'll have my new director of the program, Crystal Leann Eddie. She'll be here to introduce herself. They're literally around the corner. And we'll also have our policy coordinator, Robin Levine, give a presentation on us moving. People had questions about that for the Board of Fish. We're doing the same presentation, moving from fishing wildlife to department interior. Additionally, they'll be covering maybe one or two other topics and be open for questions. Thank you. It's great to be here. 2025 is going to be a grand year.
Thank you, George. We'll move on to Captain Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Captain Brent Johnson, Alaska Wildlife Troopers with the State Department of Public Safety. Glad to be here. I am the Alaska Wildlife Troopers representative for the Board of Game and here to answer questions and help out as best I can.
Thank you, Captain. Moving on to Cheryl Brooking, Department of Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome to everyone. I'm Cheryl Brooking with the Alaska Department of Law out of Anchorage. And I would like to ask Kimberly Delfrade to stand up. I'm going to put her on the spot. Kimberly has graciously accepted the position as Wildlife Attorney for the State of Alaska. She'll be starting in about a month. We'll be working together jointly for a few months and then she'll be taking over completely when I retire in May.
Congratulations. Okay, and Kristi?
Good afternoon. My name is Kristi Tibbles. I'm the Board's Executive Director, based out of Juneau. And I'd like to introduce the board support team that's here with us today, making all of this happen for us, starting with Savannah Hollingworth. She's based out of Bethel and she is serving as the Board of Games Publication Specialist. So we're happy to have her in that position. Next to her is Annie Bartholomew from Juneau. She is the Publication Specialist for the Board of Fisheries. Next to Annie is Leila Williams. She is our Regional Coordinator for the South Central Region. And next to her is Sam Kirby. Sam is our Regional Coordinator for the Arctic Region. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anybody else? Did I forget anybody? Kristi? I think we covered everybody. All right, I'm going to move on to some meeting formalities. If you can just bear with me, please. The purpose of the meeting, the purpose of this work session is to have an opportunity to hear various reports and updates from the Department of Fish and Game and other agencies and to address some administrative business. There will be no regulatory action conducted at this meeting today. Notice of the meeting. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the board's staff distributed and posted a meeting notice with the Alaska Online Public Notice System on the Board of Game website as its designated posting place and distributed into a lengthy list of email recipients. I will not take the time to read it, but copies of the notice can be found at the back of the room in the table, RC1 Workbook, for those who are interested in the complete text. Agenda and meeting materials. Copies of the tentative agenda and the workbook for this meeting can be found in the back of the room on the table. The meeting materials workbook is also available on the Board of Game website, www boardofgame@adfgalaska.gov. And Ethics Disclosures. Since this meeting is a non-regulatory meeting, members are not required to give their ethics disclosure statements at this time. However, board members will be expected to provide disclosure statements starting tomorrow, at tomorrow's regulatory meeting. Public testimony and written comments. The board is not taking oral public testimony during this meeting, but is accepting written comment. Anyone who would like to submit written comments to the board can do so by submitting them to the board. Anyone who would like to submit written comments to the board can do so by submitting them to the board support staff at the end of our table here, to my right. Comments can also be submitted on the Board of Game website, or by faxing it to nine oh seven four six five six zero nine four. Written comments are limited to ten single-sided or five double-sided pages. All documents received at this board meeting will be assigned a record copy, known as an R.C. number, and will be distributed to the board members and posted on the meeting website. The original of all the written materials submitted will be retained for a permanent record of the board and will be posted online. Cell phones and hearing devices, before we begin, please turn off your cell phones. And if anyone has trouble hearing the discussion, there are hearing devices available from board staff. And next, we're going to move on to the election of officers. At this time, we are ready to proceed with our agenda. The first line of business is to elect officers. And I'd like to open the chair to, for nomination, I'd like to open the floor to, for nominations. Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this for the position of chairman?
Yes, well, I'm taking nominations for chairman, correct.
Okay, I nominate Member Jake Fletcher.
I second that.
Yeah, thank you. Seconds not required for the nominations, but so far, we have Jake. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent for Jake Fletcher for chairman. Okay, thank you, Jake. Congratulations, Jake, you're chairman. So, we're going to take a quick break here, and Jake and I will switch places. Okay, with that being said, we're going to take nominations for Vice Chair. Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I nominate Mr. Stash Hoffman for Vice Chairman.
Any other nominations for Vice Chair? With that being said, do we have unanimous consent? Now, we'll go on break.
Oh, I got a gavel.
Agency Reports. At this time, we're going to hear state agency updates, reports followed by the federal agency reports. Commissioner Doug Vincent Lang, would you like to go first?
You were talking about federal agencies there, so I was chewing something. The only thing that I have to report is that the governor had a phone call with Louis Cusack, Ruth's husband, and Ruth is going to resign from the board effective in the next week or so. So, the governor plans to appoint somebody, at least temporarily, get through the statewide meeting sometime between now and the statewide meeting. So, you should have a full board complement by the statewide meeting. Other than that, I think you've seen the budget that the governor's office released as part of the F.Y. twenty-five or twenty-six budget. Wildlife Division did fairly well on that budget. They have the, they have no major cuts, and they actually have the authority to spend the incoming money on P.R. funds, which is, which is very good. We don't really have any major pieces of legislation that are going to be carried by the department moving forward at this, at this one. Governor's Office may have some legislation, but we're not carrying anything forward that's wildlife-specific at this next legislative session. So, with that, again, I want to thank you all for your service on the board. Public service is not always easy, but, you know, it is often rewarding and sometimes very much fun, but it's also very serious action. So, thank you for your time away from your family and friends and pursuits.
Thank you for that. Any board members have any questions for the commissioner? All right, hearing Director Ryan Scott, you got to report for us, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and again, the public and folks listening online. I've already introduced our staff who are here. However, I did not recognize Mr. Gino Del Frady, our previous Regional Supervisor, and it's great to see him here and to see him supporting the division as we go forward. He did many, many of these in his career. I've got a fairly brief kind of administrative update, and I'll provide some additional programmatic updates tomorrow, once we get into the board meeting itself. As the commissioner mentioned, our budgets are still looking very well. We're still doing, receiving a lot of the Pittman Robertson monies that are coming in. For F.Y. twenty-five, an overall budget of about sixty-nine million dollars. That's for the entire division. About forty-five and a half million dollars from the P.R. funding, seventeen, eighteen million dollars from the Fishing Game Fund, and about three point one million of general fund. I'd like to also thank the board for their continued support for our budgets. Oftentimes, the board writes a letter in support of that, and we were able to secure additional authority in the Fishing Game Fund to the tune of about five point five million dollars last year, and an additional one point three million dollars of G.F., which goes to some of our non-game programs. So, again, thank you for helping us with that. In F.Y. twenty-six, the budget cycle, you know, gosh, I feel like the budget cycle starts, I don't, I don't even know when it starts, it just blends in. So, we've been working on the F.Y. twenty-six, submitted to the governor's office, and we're seeking about six point, about seventy million dollars, a little bit of an increase this year. A lot of those increases are very similar to other departments and agencies that you're going to, you would hear from, personnel costs, things like that. It's also important, though, to recognize that many, many things that we use on a day-to-day basis cost more. Airplane gas, boat gas, other equipment, subscriptions for technology, things like that. We have yet, in any given year, to see things go backwards. So, that, we'll imagine that'll continue into the future as well. Shooting range-wise, we're seeking about one point three million dollars. That covers the three Fishing Game shooting ranges across the state. We do have some smaller ones that we support, but the three big ones are Juneau, Anchorage, the Juneau Indoor Range, Anchorage Rabbit Creek, and the Fairbanks Indoor Range. And I believe there's about seven employees that are employed, you know, for those three ranges all the time. We're looking at about a thirty-eight point, thirty-eight and a half million dollar apportionment for P.R. this year. That's the prediction. That is down. Previous years, you know, it'd been forty-five million. This year, it's forty million, so it is going down. This is the second year in a row that overall nationwide, P.R. receipts have declined. In two thousand and twenty-four, it was down about nineteen percent nationwide. This year, it's down about seven percent. So, it's less of a decline, but that trajectory is still there. We are, we're able to absorb the money, we're able to spend it. We have a lot of different, you know, our operational, normal operational day-to-day work. We also have some capital improvement projects that are ongoing that'll help us accommodate those, those funds. We're in the grant cycle. That's how P.R. works. We submit a grant application every year, and those will be due into the Fish and Wildlife Service in March, another part of our budgeting scenario. Other budget stuff, the draw just wrapped up in December. Results will come out, Natalie will tell us when they come out, in February. I don't recall the exact date. We didn't, we had about a eighty-four thousand dollar decline in revenue through the draw process. Not terrible, for sure. License sales, though, in, through November of two thousand and twenty-four, we just, like yesterday, got the December numbers. We're seeing about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar increase over two thousand and twenty-three. Keep in mind that oftentimes, non-resident licenses and big game locking tags account for the majority of that. Not oftentimes, they do. That's the, how it works. That's still doing pretty well, though, and, and feeling good about the license and tag sales. I've mentioned to the board over time, at least the last couple of years, you know, Alaska residents during the COVID time, when we were, we missed those non-resident opportunities, the hunting license and the, the locking tags, boy, Alaska residents really, they took the bull by the horns. And the, I don't have the numbers here today, I could get them for you if you're interested, but the increase, the percentage increase, you know, over the COVID time period was pretty impressive. You know, it was just really neat to see people, frankly, the way I view that is, see people taking advantage of the out, the wildlife resource opportunities that they have, largely based on the actions of this board. Couple other monetary things, as you know, we offer auction and raffle permits to be auctioned and raffled off by various conservation groups. That process is going now, probably getting emails from various conservation groups about permits that they have, and that'll be going for a while. And we're really getting into the conservation show season where those will be marketed. We've done the McNeil River Bear Viewing Raffle now for a few years, and that has gained in quite a bit of popularity. It's down a little bit this year, from a hundred and sixty-eight thousand in two thousand and twenty-three to a hundred and thirty thousand in two thousand and twenty-four. Then we also have something that previous Director Grasser and Assistant Director Tony Kavalock developed, Super Seven, where there's a combination of permits, and people are able to choose. Last year, we got about four hundred and sixty-six thousand. This year, it came down to about two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. It's a little bit of a decline there, but still producing quite a bit of revenue for us. This year, there is not a Super Seven. We've talked to most of our partners, if not all of them, and, you know, there's, there's interest there. It's a lot of time, a lot of work, and it takes some effort to get it all shaken out at the end. And the department, as well as most of the partners, just wanted to offer the permits as they were. And we were able to award those permits for auctions and raffles. We were fully subscribed, we didn't have things left over, things like that. So, we'll see. In the future, we may go back to that Super Seven. I think this year, we'll see what we get in revenue back from those permits, and then we'll have a discussion about that. Staffing-wise, we've got two hundred and eighty-two positions authorized. We have thirty-six vacancies as of just a couple of days ago. That's only thirteen percent. That's pretty darn good, actually. We are not immune to the recruiting and the retention issues that the State of Alaska and other agencies and other industries are experiencing. So, I'm pretty darn happy with thirteen percent. And we have several of those vacancies in recruitment, they're just, you know, in the process, and it takes some time. I usually touch on kind of big retirements that we know are coming. This year, we only have one, and that's going to be Tom Schumacher out of Region One. He's the Regional Supervisor, and he's, plans to retire at the end of April, so he won't be with us when we go to wherever you decide for the Southeast Meeting next year. But that is in recruitment now, and I do know there is some interest internally, as well as in the department itself. So, I anticipate we'll be able to fill that, and as the leader of the region, it's important to get that done. We recently hired a TED Coordinator, the Threatened, Endangered and Diversities Program, and she came to us as a non-game program biologist from the state of Hawaii. And it has started, but is currently on leave, maternity leave, and then will be back on, I believe, next month, or next week, excuse me, full-time. Partner Program Coordinator for that auction and raffle program that we have, you know, doggone it, I think we're just doing really good at training people, and then the NGOs come and get them. And so, it happened to us again here just recently, and Chelsea Pardo, who's done a great job for us, has moved on. However, as Molly McCarthy previous to her, she agreed to help us kind of keep the wheels on the bus while we're going through the recruitment, and so she's working part-time for us as well. That position is in recruitment. We have the applicants. We've actually, this morning, I spent quite a bit of time with other folks, and we've got most of the interviews scheduled for next week. So, my hope is that we can get those slated and, or not next week, sorry, the week after, get those done pretty quick. And a couple of other things, just briefly, our HIT program, the Hunter Education and Information and Training Program, it's very active. Probably many of you contribute to that in one sense or another, and have over the years, and certainly really appreciate that. Another really big year for the HIT program. We had, for basic hunter ed, a hundred and forty-eight classes and eighteen hundred and eighty-three students across the state, and that's just not, that's not just urban areas. That includes rural areas as well. Bow Hunter Ed, forty-seven classes, four hundred and one folks finished that up. Muzzle Loader, seventeen classes, eighty-four certified. Crossbow, which is a little, you know, relatively new for us, eleven classes and forty students. Very active program within the department, but not doable, frankly, without volunteer instructors. So, I would encourage all of you, if you have an interest in that, let us know, and we can talk to you about that and work with you, and people in the audience as well, or people online. Or if you know somebody, pass them our way, or have them give us a call, and we'd love to talk to them. Frankly, it's just not doable without a large cadre of volunteer hunter ed instructors. And my deepest thanks to folks who volunteered their time there. Lastly, a few years ago, we implemented a firearms training requirement for the department. Wasn't something that we had in our policies, and based on, and we worked on it for like ten years, I believe. It took a long time to get us there, but we've done very well with that. And this year, we had three hundred and sixty-six staff members. This is department-wide, not just D.W.C. Go through that, and ninety-five percent of them completed the training. It's not meant, it wasn't built for everybody, you know, it's not meant to just be a gimme. It takes some practice, a little bit of stress involved and things like that. It's also a lot of fun. You get a lot of shooting in, in a day, so that's always a good time. And I think I'll save the rest of my comments for tomorrow, more programmatic stuff, but if any of the board members have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thanks, Director Scott. Any board members have any questions? All right, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, for your presentation. The Fishing Game Fund, is that, is that where the licenses and the drawing permit money goes? Is that, is that that number? The eighteen million?
Through the Chair, Member Loring. That is correct. Yep, license and tag sales all go to that.
Okay, thanks.
Member Hoffman, or Vice Chair Hoffman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ryan, just a quick question about, since you were talking about the McNeil River Lottery, I guess, has, has the state thought about doing the similar thing to like the Walrus Islands down in Unit Seventeen, or is it not nowhere near as popular?
Through the Chair, Member Hoffman. I think it's like wildly popular. The tough part is getting there. And so, where we can get, you know, clients, or not our clients, but permitees to McNeil pretty routinely, regularly, weather notwithstanding, things like that, but something we can consider. Yeah, something we can talk about, for sure.
Any other questions from board members? All right, if not, thanks, thanks again, Director Scott, and Dr. Amy Wida with subsistence, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, good afternoon to you, members of the board, and everyone joining us here in Wasilla and listening to us remotely online. I'll provide a brief divisional update today, and then tomorrow, I can also provide a little bit more information for us as well. I wanted to start by just saying how time certainly has flown since our last meeting, and I'm really looking forward to working with the board for the second year with my role in the Division of Subsistence, so very much looking forward to that. As everyone knows, the Division of Subsistence supports both the Board of Game and the Board of Fisheries. We started our cycle this year with a Board of Fisheries meeting in Cordova in December, so we launched that way. And myself and staff will participate in meetings in South Central Alaska and Southeast Alaska for both board meetings this cycle. So, next, I'll provide a little bit of information on staff. So next, I'll provide a little bit of information on staffing. Subsistence continues to have staff in our three offices in Anchorage, Fairbanks, and Douglas. We have forty-eight positions in total, with about forty of them currently filled. We're very excited that our administrative staff is fully staffed right now, and we have an excellent team. So that's something that's new for us. And as Director Scott mentioned, the department is overall, I think, experiencing some difficulties with recruitment and retention. And we are not, we are familiar with that as well. And for, so for our research staff, candidates, the candidate pools tend to be small, and qualifications don't tend to be as robust as we need them for our research. So for right now, due to people changing positions within the division, as well as taking positions elsewhere, we're at about forty percent capacity for our lead research staff. And those are our subsistence resource specialist threes primarily, in both our southern region and our northern region. And that's taking its toll on the, you know, from a workload perspective for the remaining staff that are with us. But we are, we have a very strong staff, they're very dedicated and very diligent. So I'm excited to see that the work that they do and how we're still proceeding on path. Overall, it's also exciting with people moving up in positions and changing positions. We have about a quarter of our staff who are new to their positions within this past year. So we are doing well in that regard. We still have a, I mentioned last year about safety train and different types of training that we do. We still have a focus on safety, on training, and our respectful workplace efforts. For safety, we continue to emphasize staff safety and empower them to make safe, safety-conscious, good decisions. And actually, I demanded of them, whether they're in the field, whether they're in town renting a car and in icy conditions on the road, or whether they're in the office. For all of the work they do, I think that that's really important to our staff. And for them to know that they're entitled to do that and have the power to do that. They continue to do training for boating, wilderness first aid, swiftwater training, and gun safety. And those are just some of the, some of the examples. Our division management team also is striving to provide educational and leadership training opportunities for staff, as well as professional development. There's currently one staff member being supported to pursue educational opportunities on top of the workload through that program. We have one subsistence resource specialist in Anchorage that's taking some native language classes, I believe. I can't remember, recall exactly what it was, plus some research methodology classes. We're also very excited for our information management lead research analyst, who recently completed his Masters of Science in Analytics, with partial support from this training opportunity from the division as well. He's a fabulous resource to the division and very, very well skilled for leading the information management team. We also have one participant in the Western Conservation Leadership Development Program. And for folks less familiar with that, it's a program involving the Western States that seeks to develop leadership capacities for teams working at all scales to collaborate on complex conservation issues and challenges. So we're looking forward to that. And we also strive to prioritize professional training. And this past year, our administrative staff participated in an annual administrative workshop led by the Division of Administrative Services. And I understand, I think they're going to do that every other year. We also have staff that represents the division on our Respectful Workplace Committee that the department has. We have representatives from both the northern region and the southern region. Our DMT is also looking at how, as a division, we're implementing the department's code of conduct and what that means for staff in the field and in the office, and how we can support them better, as well as supporting the efforts of the department on that front. The member participating in the Western Conservation Leadership Development Program is also part of a working group for that program that examines how to improve agency culture and how to apply that on an everyday basis in meaningful ways for staff. So we're looking forward to seeing how that turns out as well. And then lastly, I just wanted to briefly mention a few select accomplishments from both regions, and then I can provide more programmatic updates tomorrow. We currently have forty-two active projects in various stages of completion. We're also in the process of submitting and having a variety of proposals in progress, seeking funding opportunities for additional projects. This past year, our southern region completed comprehensive harvest surveys in eight communities, plus two species-specific resource projects, including one in Klowak in Southeast. We also worked with the Tuget Regional Resources Commission to produce a traditional ecological knowledge handbook of moose hunting. And that's still in production, but we'll see that coming online as well. Our northern region completed comprehensive surveys in Wainwright, Kivalina, Kotlick, Alakanuk, and Ambler. And comprehensive surveys include both fisheries, wildlife, and plant resources that we ask people about as far as wild food harvests are concerned. We're also, northern region is also producing the final report for the Western Arctic Caribou Herd Project that involves eight communities. We received the necessary approvals to document the use of wild foods at potlatches in the northern region for the statewide potlatch project that we have. And the northern region staff will continue to participate, excuse me, the northern region staff will participate in the upcoming reinstatement of the Forty Mile Caribou Herd Management Coalition. And they continue to participate in the Unit Nineteen Sheep Working Group. And with that, Mr. Chair, I will leave the rest for tomorrow. And thank you very much for your time and the members of the public. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Dr. Wito. Does the board members have any questions for the doctor? Al.
Yeah, it's not necessarily a question, but thanks for that. But I'd just also like to recognize a longtime fishing game employee from the Division of Subsistence, Jim Simon, who showed a lot of patience over the years of me visiting his office.
Any other questions from board members? All right, thank you very much again, Doctor. And now we're going to go to the brains of this outfit. Kristy Tibbles, if you could give us an update for board support, please.
You're too kind. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and interested public. I just had a couple of things to update the board about board support section. We did a little bit of reorganization with staffing, and so I wanted to cover that. We had had an, one of our regional coordinators, we have, I will start by saying, we have five regional coordinator positions that are seasonal positions located around the state to assist the local fishing game advisory committees. Over the last year and a half or so, we had difficulty filling the Arctic Region position. And so that I introduced Ms. Sam Kirby, we have relocated that position. She's now based out of Anchorage. And that actually is truly helpful to the program because the Anchorage office is very, very busy with support for the boards, board meetings, prep and whatnot. So we're able to utilize her for that assistance. And we're still able to have her work effectively with the Arctic Region Advisory Committees. And then we will also send her out to those locations. She traveled to the Norton Sound area to attend the north, northern Norton Sound Advisory Committee and Southern Norton Sound Advisory Committee. We have Ms. Savannah Holly North as our publication specialist, and she's in Bethel, still covering the, the Western Region Advisory Committees. That left us with another regional coordinator position, and we have chosen to base that person in Juneau to help with the Southeast Advisory Committees. We are currently undergoing the recruitment for that, so it's vacant at this time. And one reason it'll be helpful to have that person based in Southeast at the Juneau office is that our, the Southeast Advisory Committees are currently supported by the two publication specialist positions, who have, in the past, have been based out of Juneau. It is a heavy workload for the publication specialists, getting ready for these meetings. You've seen mass amount of comments. There's a lot of IT-related, technical-related duties that those, the publication specialist positions do. So we are trying to have that regional coordinator position based in Juneau to take those advisory committees off the plate of the publication specialists. So it's a little reorganization for board support that hasn't, hasn't happened in a long, long time. And I think it'll be a good change for the program. I also wanted to touch base on the advisory committees. I like to give you an update on their activity. It's always impressive to me how many meetings are occurring during even just the first few months of the board meeting cycle. And so my, my tally of the advisory committee meetings to date is one hundred and thirty-four, I think, since early September. It's very impressive, again, supported by the regional coordinators and our board support section team. We have a lot of activity in the Southeast region with ACs because the Board of Fisheries is covering the Southeast Fisheries topics. And they will, Board of Fisheries will soon be meeting at the end of this month. I think the length of that duration is thirteen days long. There is many, many proposals that our ACs are covering in order to give comments to the Board of Fisheries at the meeting that will be located in Ketchikan. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I wanted to update the board about. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kristy. Any questions from board members? All right, hearing none. Cheryl Brookings, will you give us a report from the Department of Law?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is that working okay? Okay, I'm going to give you a litigation update report. This is an update from the report that I gave last January. So bear with me here. Okay, we'll start with the federal court cases. Alaska Wildlife Alliance versus Holland. In this case, AWA challenged the 2020 National Park Service rule that amended the 2015 rule that was previously challenged by the state. So this is one of those rules that keeps changing when the administration changes. The state has been working with Safari Club International and the Alaska Professional Hunters Association in either challenging or defending rules, depending on what year it is. So in this particular case, the state and these other groups intervened. The Park Service, when the administration changed, did not participate in briefing or oral argument to defend its rule. That rule fell to the intervenor defendants. The Federal District Court remanded the rule without vacator. All parties then appealed to the Ninth Circuit. Then a proposed rule was published by the National Park Service last January in twenty, or in twenty twenty-three, actually, two years ago, to reimpose the 2015 restrictions that the state had opposed, if you're following me here. A final rule was then issued by the National Park Service effective in August 2024. In November 2024, the Ninth Circuit dismissed the Ninth Circuit appeal and vacated the decision of the District Court. So the District Court decision has no presidential value, it's been vacated. The new rule that's in place restricts bear baiting on national preserves and says that trappers must actually use a trap when trapping. The next case is the Alaska versus the Federal Subsistence Board. This case started in August 2020 when the state challenged actions taken by the Federal Subsistence Board as violating NILCA, the Federal Open Meetings Act, and the Administrative Procedure Act. The state challenged the Federal Subsistence Board's decision to close moose and caribou hunting in game management units thirteen A and B for two years to non-federally qualified hunters. And the state challenged the board's delegation of authority to local federal land managers to open emergency hunts and to delegate hunt administration outside of a federal agency, neither action being authorized by Congress and where the Unified Command found that there was no emergency. In December 2021, the Alaska Federal District Court issued a decision declining to address some of the state's claims and held that the Federal Subsistence Board is not required to comply with Open Meetings Act requirements. The court upheld the two-year moose and caribou closures on federal lands in units thirteen A and B. The state appealed, the Ninth Circuit issued a decision in March 2023, vacating the district's court decision to uphold the Unit Thirteen closure. So again, that decision that the Federal District Court had upholding the closure has no legal presidential value because it's been vacated, and remanded the case to the District Court to address the state's claim that the Federal Subsistence Board is not authorized to open seasons. On remand, the District Court upheld the Federal Subsistence Board's actions in opening the emergency moose and deer hunt near Kake during COVID. The state appealed to the Ninth Circuit. Briefing is complete. Oral argument is scheduled for February seventh, 2025, in Portland. The next one is United States versus Alaska. In 2022, the United States sued the state of Alaska, seeking a declaratory judgment that Alaska's emergency orders that open harvest on the Koskoquam River within the refuge during a federal closure are invalid and void. The United States also sought an injunction to prevent the state from issuing emergency orders or from taking any similar actions in contravention of federal orders addressing NILCA Title Eight subsistence and applicable regulations. The district judge denied the United States' motion for a temporary restraining order, but ultimately granted a request for preliminary injunction while the case is being litigated on the merits. Alaska filed an answer and several counterclaims, several groups have intervened in that case. In March 2024, Judge Gleason granted summary judgment for the US and issued final judgment on April one. She did not agree with the state that the Sturgeon decision undermined the basis for the reserved water rights doctrine providing title to the federal government for purposes of managing subsistence fishing in state waters. The state appealed to the Ninth Circuit. Opening briefs have been filed, and oral argument is scheduled to occur in Pasadena in April or May of this year. The Wildfish Conservancy in March 2020 sued the National Marine Fisheries Service, alleging that the salmon fishery in federal waters adjacent to Southeast Alaska violated the Endangered Species Act. Specifically, the Wildfish Conservancy argued that the ESA Endangered Species Act biological opinion related to the southern resident killer whales was flawed, and that take of their food, specifically Chinook salmon, was unlawful. Alaska intervened and participated in cross-motions for summary judgment. The court granted the plaintiff summary judgment, finding that nymphs violated the ESA by failing to include solid guarantees that future mitigation to offset the negative impacts on endangered species would occur, and that the BIOP, the biological opinion, violates the ESA by failing to evaluate whether the prey increase program will jeopardize the endangered Chinook salmon ESUs in Western Washington. So they closed, this is the Southeast Alaska fishery affecting whales in Washington. So the District Court effectively enjoined the Southeast Alaska salmon troll fishery, but the decision was stayed and ultimately reversed by the Ninth Circuit. In October 2024, NOAA Fisheries released a new BIOP and environmental impact statement for Southeast Alaska salmon fisheries. United Cook Inlet Drift Association versus nymphs. In November 2021, nymphs published the Alaska Salmon FMP Amendment fourteen, final rule that closed federal waters of Cook Inlet to commercial salmon fishing. The United Cook Inlet Drift Association, known as UCITA, sued nymphs, challenging the validity of Amendment fourteen. The District Court found Amendment fourteen to be invalid and ordered a new salmon FMP covering the Cook Inlet EEZ to be in place by May 2024. That did happen, a new FMP was in fact in place by May one. UCITA filed a motion to enforce that was summarily denied by the District Court. UCITA then filed a pair of two new lawsuits challenging the new Amendment sixteen. The first case makes essentially the same arguments that they made in prior litigation, and the second one challenges the harvest specifications. Opening briefs have been filed to the District Court. And just to summarize that in a nutshell, UCITA did not get the FMP that they wanted. Alaska and North Slope Borough versus nymphs. In November 2022, the state filed a complaint challenging nymphs' negative ninety-day finding regarding a petition to delist the Arctic ringed seal. The state's complaint sought a remand, directing nymphs to reconsider the negative finding in light of updated information collected since the species was listed. And again, the ringed seal and some other species have been listed as threatened based on models that decades into the future, loss of sea life, sea ice could impact their populations. And I know the commissioner has words to say about that because there's been actually no decline in the ringed seals. And so it's hard to come up with a recovery plan when there's nothing to recover from. But anyway, that litigation is ongoing. there's nothing to recover from. But anyway, that litigation is ongoing. Briefing is happening now, anticipated to conclude in early 2025.
I'll just add to that, there's three to seven million ringed seals out there, and there's no impact to those seals for the next 50 years, according to the nymph's data. It's all projected decline sometime 50 to 100 years into the future.
There's another Alaska versus nymphs case. In February 2023, the state filed a complaint challenging nymphs' designation of critical habitat for the Arctic Ring seal and the Beringia distinct population segment of the Pacific Bearded Seal. Following oral argument on September 26, 2024, the district court agreed with the state that the critical habitat designations were unlawful and set aside those designations. Nymphs and environmental interveners have appealed that to the Ninth Circuit, and the state filed a cross-appeal regarding one issue that the district court did not adopt. Briefing is anticipated to conclude in the second quarter of 2025. So those are the federal cases I was going to report on. In the state court, Castle versus Alaska Board of Game. Robert Castle filed a complaint in May 2019, objecting to the board's regulation allocating brown bear drawing permits between residents and non-residents in Unit 8. The state prevailed on cross motions for summary judgment. Castle appealed. Oral argument was held in February 2024, and we continue to await a decision on that one. Bennett, Joel Bennett and the Alaska Wildlife Alliance filed a complaint in October 2020 objecting to the 2020 estimate of the wolf population in Unit 2 and seeking closure of wolf hunting and trapping in Unit 2 on state lands only for the 2020 to 2021 season. Their request for a preliminary injunction was denied. The state's motions for dismissal and for summary judgment were denied. Trial was held in April 2022, and the state prevailed on everything. The plaintiffs appealed to the Alaska Supreme Court. Oral argument was held in February 2024. A decision was issued this past October, upholding the Superior Court's decision in its entirety, and specifically rejecting Bennett and AWA's attempt to raise new claims after trial was completed and a decision was issued. West versus State of Alaska. Ronald West sued the state in July 2021, alleging that the definition of sustained yield in the statute, and that's in AS 1605255, is unconstitutional. The state's motion to dismiss was denied. The state ultimately prevailed on summary judgment. The court found that the legislature has the authority to define sustained yield and that the definition in the statute is valid and consistent with Article 8 of the Constitution. West appealed. Oral argument was held in December 2023. The court issued a decision this past October, upholding the Superior Court's decision in its entirety. So to summarize, the legislature was authorized to define sustained yield for purposes of intensive management, and the definition is consistent with the Alaska Constitution. Cook Inlet Fund versus the state. A group of commercial salmon fishermen sued alleging that the management of Cook Inlet salmon fisheries is illegal, that the regulations adopted by the Board of Fisheries are invalid, and that the Department of Fish and Game and Board of Fish are violating federal law in a variety of ways. Superior Court denied SIF's motion seeking a temporary restraining order. The state's motion to dismiss was largely granted, and the state was granted summary judgment on the remaining issue. SIF appealed to the Supreme Court, where the matter's been fully briefed, and we awaited Cook Inlet Keeper. This is a group of plaintiffs who challenged the commissioner's repeal of a regulation which was the prohibition on personal watercraft in Kachemec Bay and Fox River Flats critical habitat areas. The plaintiffs allege that the defendants, the state, the commissioner, et cetera, violated the Administrative Procedure Act, acted without statutory authority, and violated the Constitution. The court held that the repeal was invalid because the department acted outside the scope of its delegated statutory authority and that the repeal was inconsistent with the authorizing statutes. The court did not address plaintiffs' other claims. The state moved for reconsideration, which was denied. The state appealed. Briefing is complete. An oral argument was held on July 31, so we awaited decision. That case is a little bit unusual because the regulation had been adopted by the department, and so it's unusual for a court to say that you can't repeal a regulation that you've adopted. Otna versus State. A committee of Otna Incorporated, Otna Inc., and two Otna shareholders sought declaratory relief that closing some subsistence Nalchina caribou hunts when the harvest quota was reached, while allowing a drawing permit hunt to remain open because that quota was not reached, does not provide a reasonable opportunity for subsistence hunters. The court denied a preliminary injunction in September 2022. Plaintiffs filed an amended complaint, adding new plaintiffs, adding new defendants, and changing the claims that they made. The state moved to dismiss. Plaintiffs filed a motion for partial summary judgment. The court then asked the parties to brief whether the issues were moot. That was done. A hearing on mootness was held on June 2024. The court then found that Otna's motion was not moot because the Board of Games' 2019 findings on allocating the harvest quota between the various hunts that the board has established remain in place and could be used again if Nalchina caribou hunts resume. The state's motion for a summary judgment and Otna's motion for partially summary judgment were denied in January 2025, just days ago. Bitner versus State. In 2023, Michelle Bitner challenged the intensive management program to aid in recovery of the Mulchotna caribou herd and alleged the state improperly allowed overhunting of the Mulchotna caribou and the Western Arctic caribou herds. The Superior Court granted the state's motion to dismiss and awarded attorney fees to the state as the prevailing party. Bitner appealed. Briefing is complete. Oral argument was held in July 2024, and we awaited decision. Alaska Wildlife Alliance versus State. In 2023, the Alaska Wildlife Alliance challenged the Board of Games' approval of the same intensive management program to aid in the recovery of the Mulchotna caribou herd. The Superior Court agreed with the state that this is essentially an administrative appeal. So the state prepared and submitted administrative record. Briefing is complete. Oral argument is scheduled for March 3, 2025. The next one, Taylor versus State. In 2023, Neilan Taylor challenged the Board of Games' adoption of the Intensive Management Regulation for moose in Unit 15C. The state and Taylor cross-moved for summary judgment. While the summary judgment briefing was in process, in August 2024, the Superior Court sues sante, that means on its own, without request from either party, issued a stay pending the Alaska Supreme Court's decision in the Bitner appeal. So that case is now being stayed. Eastman versus Alaska. David Eastman filed a lawsuit in the Juno Superior Court in November, challenging the constitutionality of SB 189. That bill was passed at the end of the legislative session in May 2024 and became law without the governor's signature. Among other things, the law authorized big game commercial guide use areas on state land. The bill is now the subject of litigation, and any action by the Board of Game creating a pilot area may be enjoined by the court and/or ultimately reversed if the bill is found to be unconstitutional. And that's the end of my report. I will not take any questions, except that if anyone wants to be able to attend any of the upcoming oral arguments, often they are available. You can call into them. They're telephonic, and so you can listen in, or you can watch them on Gavel to Gavel. So if any of you are interested, let Kristi know, and I'll make sure that Kristi has the information for you if you have the time and inclination to attend. Thank you.
I know that Department of Law said that we're going to entertain any questions, but Member Barrett, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I think it was to the cases. So my question is not pertaining to any one of those cases. It's about attorney fees. And who is able to collect them, and when can they be, or when can they be collected?
In Alaska, we have Rule 82 under the court rules, and we also have a specific statute that talks to, sorry, I'm losing my voice. I'm not used to talking this much. We have a specific statute that addresses attorney fees. So generally, the prevailing party is entitled to recover a percentage of the attorney fees and all of the costs incurred in litigation. There are exceptions. If there is a constitutional claim, and it has to be a real claim, you can't just say, oh, well, due process was violated, and, you know, there has to be a real constitutional issue there. Then even if the plaintiff loses, then they don't have to pay the state's fees or a portion of the state's fees. So we do recover fees every now and then when it's a statutory claim.
Thank you very much for that. Member Loring.
Thank you. A quick question. I don't think it pertains specifically to one of the cases, but Michelle Bitner was something to do with standing, whether she had standing or not. Is that part of the case that you mentioned, or is that still ongoing?
Yes, to the chair, Member Loring. That case dealt with whether she had standing to sue, and she was dismissed for lack of standing. The state's argument is that she merely disagreed with the state, that she had no relationship with the caribou or the bears in the area at question, had never been there. Her statement on standing said that she has traveled in Alaska. She was personally devastated, and she's never seen a wolf.
Any other questions from board members? Commissioner?
Yeah, I want to thank Cheryl and Department of Law for their work. As you can see, there's a lot of litigation going on defending the state's management of its fish and wildlife populations. And we have a governor that's very supportive of those defenses and legislature that's giving us money to help defend those. And I hope our new young attorney out there is listening very carefully to these cases because she's going to inherit a lot of them. But, you know, really, the fundamental responsibilities of the Department of Fish and Game that we got at statehood to manage our fishing game resources is increasingly under attack on a variety of different fronts. And I don't think, I can't remember back the number of lawsuits that we're currently engaged in defending that. So thank you, Cheryl, for your efforts.
I see Kimberly back there cracking her knuckles and chomping at the bit. So thanks a whole bunch for that, Department of Law. Any other questions from board members? Okay, none. Captain Johnson, could you go next, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board and folks listening out there. So agency update for the Alaska Wildlife Troopers. So just a little background. So Alaska Wildlife Troopers are a division within the Alaska Department of Public Safety. Our primary mission is the enforcement of Alaska's Fish, Wildlife, and Natural Resource laws and regulations. Wildlife troopers are fully commissioned state troopers and carry the same statutory police authority as state troopers. And while all state troopers are empowered to enforce provisions of Title 16 of the Alaska statutes and the resource regulations under the Alaska Administrative Code, typically, it's the division of wildlife troopers who serve as the primary enforcement experts for natural resource law enforcement. And that's just due to the complex and specialized nature of resource law enforcement. We, as a division, utilize a sizable array of aircraft, large, medium, and small vessels, ATVs, and other off-road equipment in order to facilitate our patrol and enforcement activities around the state. Over the past few budget cycles, we were fortunate enough to receive some significant funding to allow for a pretty sizable refreshment of our off-highway and marine assets. And so over the last few years, we've gotten to upgrade and replace a lot of that stuff that our troopers rely on to get out into the field and do their job. As far as staffing, echo what everybody else has already said, same issues. We're not immune, but I think we're doing pretty good. Currently, we have 90 positions in 31 different post locations around the state. Just for some context, in 1984, there were 117 fully commissioned and four partially commissioned wildlife enforcement troopers. And at that time, Alaska's population was approximately 534,000. Today, our state population's up over 730,000. So less troopers, more people. We currently are sitting at seven vacancies at various locations around the state. Good news is, we have four recruits who are right now, today, working through their about four-month-long field training and evaluation program. Three of them are here in the Matsui Valley and one up in Fairbanks. We'll have another academy starting later this month, and we're expecting to have between two and three additional new hires to help fill some current and future vacancies. Meanwhile, we already know this year for 2025, we're expecting three of our lieutenants to retire and at least one wildlife trooper, especially with those command-level vacancies. Not only are we going to lose a lot of historical knowledge, but also it's kind of what we call a trickle-down effect, because we'll have sergeants that will eventually promote to fill those lieutenant positions, and then field troopers who will hopefully promote to fill those vacant sergeant positions. So while we're building our bench straight for the future, it just ends up creating more vacancies down at the field levels. And then again, just for kind of a contextual point, our statewide AWT headquarters staff is numbered six, and five of which are currently retirement-eligible. Thankfully, I don't think anybody's going anywhere yet, but that could change. So while AWT focus is primarily on resource-related enforcement, again, we're fully commissioned state troopers. Our staff are often responding to criminal emergency calls for service. That's true both in urban areas, where we'll often supplement the AST patrol troopers, but it's also true in the rural areas. Frequently, in fact, in a rural area, a wildlife trooper might be the only law enforcement that's available in some areas. McGrath is a good Wildlife troopers are also primarily responsible throughout a larger area of the state now for conducting and managing the search and rescue operations that the Department of Public Safety takes on. I think our wildlife troopers do a really good job managing and balancing those diverse tasks because we find it's really easy for the resource protection duties to fall by the wayside if you're not really focused on that. So I think due to all that, it's a good time to kind of speak to that we rely, probably now more than ever, on the public to act as kind of our force multipliers, and really by reporting illegal activities and suspicious activities to the wildlife troopers. We always have encouraged, and we continue to encourage, the public to share in the responsibility for protecting our resources by making those reports and those tips to us. They can do that directly to the local wildlife trooper. They can do it via our local dispatch centers. We've still have the Alaska Wildlife Safeguard number. And then for the more modern-minded of us out there, they can submit a tip anonymously and online. There's both an app that's called Tip 411, and then there's a website, Tip 411. And we actually are getting quite a bit of information coming in that way from folks. It's real easy to do, as long as you have some kind of internet connection, you can get on and send stuff. Over this past year, just kind of some things of notes, AWT investigated some pretty significant cases. Obviously, you can't get into real harsh details on a lot of them if they're still open and pending, but that includes some groups of hunters using motorized vehicles to access controlled use areas, several big game illegal take and want and waste cases, of which have frequently resulted in some significant seizures of firearms, ATVs side-by-sides, and a use of an aircraft to locate and harvest dull sheep during the prohibited period of sheep season. All of those cases were the direct result of sit-ups in one form or fashion or another. Frequently, that information either tipped off a wildlife trooper in the area that something was going on, or helped steer an investigation that may have already been underway that resulted in successful, or hopefully, successful prosecution of the offenders. And that concludes my updates for the board. If there's any questions.
Thanks, Captain Johnson. Any questions from board members? Member Loring? Member Loring.
I thank Captain Johnson for your information. On the last note about the use of aircraft for spitting sheep, has there been any more movement on that? Is it still pending? Has there been a not guilty plea? What's the status on that you can share with us? I know it's, probably can't share much, but kind of curious if there's been an outcome yet on that case.
Yeah, absolutely. Member Loring through the chair. The case is still pending, so yeah, I can't speak to any details while it's pending, but it is still pending.
Any other questions from board members? Captain Johnson, thanks for that report. Next, we're going to go to George Pappas, Office of Subsistence Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations on your chairmanship. I have my brand-new supervisor, Crystal Leonetti, the Director of Office of Subsistence Management and also our Policy Coordinator, Robin Levine, present and here to answer questions, too. And keep in mind, if you have regulatory meeting-specific related questions, you can ask them here, and we can get you answers in the next seven or eight days. So just to give you a heads-up, we will work behind the scenes to get what we can for you. Thank you very much. And I'll turn it over to my supervisor, Crystal.
All right. Waqaa. That means "what's up" in Yupick. Tiskugula. My Yupick name is Tiskuk, given to me in the traditional way by my grandparents. I also go by Crystal Leonetti. Cheryongmyungula, which means I'm, my ancestors are from Dillingham. My mom grew up there. My grandparents homesteaded in Seward and Palmer and ended up in Anchor Point where I was born and raised. I'll do a little introduction of myself, and Robin and I will go through some of the big changes that Office of Subsistence Management has gone through in the last six months. It's been a big year for OSM. Again, I'm born and raised in Anchor Point and Homer, so I'm part hippie, part redneck. My mom and dad are Al and Grace Poindexter, also from Anchor Point. Grandparents, Harry and Daisy Barnes from Dillingham, and Chuck and Beulah Poindexter from Anchor Point. I'm married to my best friend, Ed. We have two daughters in college and high school, and we live in Anchorage where I always said I would never live. I have an agricultural education degree from University of Idaho and have worked in the conservation field for my whole career, starting in Homer. Have worked here in Wasilla, lived here for a little while. Fairbanks, Kenai, and then Anchorage overseeing the Bethel Office when I was with USDA. Moved to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service 14 years ago and became the Alaska Native Affairs Specialist there. And just a couple weeks ago, moved into this role, which is now named Director because the office has moved out of the Fish and Wildlife Service administratively. So I'll tell you a little bit about that, and Robin will get into some more details about other big changes. So, during the summer of last year, the Office of Subsistence Management transitioned operations to the Office of the Secretary's Assistant Secretary for Policy Management and Budget. OSM is now organizationally situated within the Office of Policy and Environmental Management, which is one of the divisions within PMB. OSM staff and organizational chart remain the same, and the physical location of the office will also remain in Alaska. So basically, how and why we conduct business has not been altered with this organizational move. We continue to have a rigorous public process in our federal subsistence, fish and wildlife, regulatory cycles, operating procedures, and meeting schedules all remain unchanged. Very briefly, our staffing updates. Amy Howard, longtime Deputy Director, has left OSM, and so we're working to fill that position, hope to fill it in the next couple of weeks. We are also working to fill our outreach coordinator position. We are working, we did fill our regulations specialist position. That's Justin Kohler. He's a familiar face to OSM, was a fisheries biologist, and then applied for and competed for that position. So that's great news. And then we are also hoping to fill a financial specialist position. Not huge changes in terms of staffing, except for, I would say, the Director and Deputy Director. And of course, George is keeping me updated on all things Board of Game, Board of Fish, State of Alaska, so I appreciate George being here and with you consistently. So I will hand it to Robin for some more changes.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Robin Levine, Subsistence Policy Coordinator for OSM. Got to peek around the screen to make sure I see all of you. I'm really grateful to be here. I wanted to give you a really brief introduction of myself as well so that you understand where I'm coming from in this particular position. I started in the arena of Alaskan subsistence management as an intern at OSM, oh gosh, about 25 years ago now. And then moved into a position at the Bristol Bay Native Association in Dillingham, conducting research in partnership with the Alaska Department of Fish and Game on comprehensive subsistence surveys and traditional ecological knowledge projects in the Bristol Bay region. And from there, moved into the Division of Subsistence, where I worked for some time, continuing my research on the subsistence way of life and how people use wild foods here in Alaska. From there, I came into the Office of Subsistence Management as an anthropologist in the anthropology division and have more recently, in the last couple of years, stepped into the subsistence policy coordinator position. So a lot of the things that I do are very board-related. So similar to you all, I work with our federal subsistence board, making sure that they have the most up-to-date information so that they can make regulatory decisions on the taking of fish and wildlife on federal public lands. So in relation to the board, more recently, in the latter part of last year, the Departments of Interior and Agriculture announced a final rule to add three new public members to the federal subsistence board, all nominated by federally-recognized tribal governments in Alaska. As of this week, we have just learned that all three appointees have accepted their positions, and they should be announced shortly. Now, the board totals 11, which is quite a big shift for me, and it's going to change the arenas, the venues within which I think we're going to be able to fit the whole table. You all are probably quite familiar with that because I see a number of you here, but it's going to be a new thing for me. But as nine members, our quorum will consist of five members, when a total number of board members is nine or fewer, and six members when the total number of board members is -- oh, sorry. Six members when a total number of board members is 10 or higher. This new board, hopefully, we don't know for sure yet, haven't confirmed, but we are hoping that the new board will all be in attendance at our very next federal subsistence board meeting, the first week of February. It's a fisheries regulatory meeting, so we will be reviewing fisheries proposals, enclosure reviews, but there are some wildlife analyses and a nonrural determination proposal that the board will be considering during that week. So you are all, of course, invited, and both myself and Crystal and George are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much for that update. Any questions from anyone, board members or department heads? Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, you guys, for being here. It's good to see you again. First question's kind of on the funny side. Do you get your building back yet?
We're very frustrated about that. We hope around March or May, I hope, we can move back in.
Great. Next, I would put a plug in for George. I tend to do that when OSM folks show up. It's great to have them. We communicate offline regularly. We stay in good conversation. And then the final question's a little bit touchy, but are there ongoing discussions about having a State of Alaska seat on the federal subsistence board? Are any discussions?
Thank you, Board Member Scott. That's not been a part of any of the discussions that I'm aware of, but we retain the liaisons to the board, which are all of the Regional Advisory Council Chairs, as well as our state liaison, who is Ben Mulligan at this point in time. The participation by the state in our program is absolutely essential. We rely on all of the divisions in the research, including the work that I used to be involved in, the work that Amy, Wida, and her crew are now involved in. All of the population status, stocks, assessments that go on across the state are essential to informing the board and making their decisions. So the state is there. Their attendance is valued as liaisons to the board. They are advisors during deliberations until an action is made. So while I understand your interest in a state board member, I have not heard any further discussions about it, but we continue to really appreciate all of the involvement and support that we get from our colleagues. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just as clarification, I'm not a board member. I'm the Director of Wildlife for Fish and Game, so I supervise all those people that help out. I appreciate the background, and it is something that, you know, we're glad we can help and provide the information. But, yeah, it's a discussion that I've heard before, so at least I would ask that you keep it in the back of your mind.
Any other questions? Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, we are happy to share our data. However, we, I have to be quite honest with you, sometimes when our data is shared, it is oftentimes, I would say, misinterpreted by your staff, and we don't feel we have an opportunity to weigh in on the interpretation of our data or the perspectives on our data that, before it's presented to the board. Because, again, we're not a board member, and we're sitting at a table, and we have to be kind of asked a question. So, you know, and it costs me quite a bit of money to participate in a process that gets you that data, that informs your decisions, but yet is frustratingly disengaged from having our voice heard at that panel member, at that board. I guess the second question I have is, you said something very interesting about, you know, your primary mission is to provide for subsistence needs, and clearly, in western Alaska, in the Malchana herd, we've heard overwhelmingly from local subsistence users about the need for predator control on that herd. And we have frustratingly dealt with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, asking for permission to extend our predator control efforts into federal land and met a lot of resistance to that process. And I guess, again, I have to, I'm going to express my frustration here, that we've also been hearing through the grapevine that as that herd is rebounding because of our predator control efforts, that there is a real potential for the federal subsistence board to step in and give the entire harvestable surplus to federally-qualified users in the area. So we will have done the dirty work. We will have done the work of doing the, taking all the public complaints about predator control efforts, only to have and spend state money because the federal government's not doing that or helping us, and yet potentially lose the entire harvestable surplus to only federally-qualified users. And that would not be very, very good public relations for the federal subsistence board to do that. We hope that we can share in that bounty so that people that grew up in the area that may be displaced in urban areas for socio-economical reasons could still go out and hunt those animals when we restore that herd. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Wida.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say thank you for being here. It's good to see you both again, and I wanted to echo what Director Scott said about the importance of George being here and our ability to work with him closely. I really do appreciate that. Appreciate the work that you do, and congratulations on your new appointment. I look forward to working with you all in various ways as we move forward, so thank you for that.
Member Barrett.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman. First, did you have an answer for the Commissioner?
Thank you. Actually, I was hoping that I could share a response, and I'm really grateful for you sharing with us candidly, openly, your experience within our program. I can only, as a process person myself, I can only tell you the opportunities that we provide to invite the state in. So all through our analysis process, we give opportunity for team field reviews of the analyses as they're being developed. We value the response that we get from our state colleagues when they have the opportunity, the time to provide response. And then right before the board meeting, we have something we called, that's called the ISC2 meeting, the Inter-Agency Staff Committee meeting. And it's really important at that time that we have our colleagues from the state attend because that's when we develop what we call our consensus or non-consensus agendas. That means that if the councils and the state and the ISC are in alignment in board action, it goes on a consensus agenda. That means it doesn't even need to be discussed. And so feedback from the state is imperative for that process. Otherwise, we would be taking up every single analyses. We also have rigorous discussions. So this meeting will go on a number of days, over the course of a number of days. And I understand that we are all, like, we have the same priority, right? We have the same priority, this group of people and ours, here in the state of Alaska, the amazing state of Alaska, for subsistence priority. And I am grateful for it. I am grateful, and I have been honored to work in the arena of subsistence management with a native organization through the state and now in a federal organization. So in some ways, these minor details, they change, but we are all interested and concerned about the resources. And your participation and the state's response in flagging for us things that we may have thought, we can provide counters of things the state may have not really thought of, helps provide for a justified action in front of, in the public arena by the board. So I don't know if that's an answer necessarily, but it is me, again, reiterating the value of your participation. I don't feel it's completely out of a vacuum. I know there's always going to be those moments where we're going to have to differ because we have slightly different interpretations on who is qualified to subsist on our lands, on our public lands. But otherwise, our priority is the same, our desire to have a strong public process supporting the subsistence way of life, that is the same. Our interest in making sure that we have resources for our future state residents are the same. Thank you, Commissioner.
Can I add to Commissioner Vincent Lang and Director Scott's? Great to see you both. We worked together a little bit during AMBCC days, so it's good to see you again. Yeah, just, I will say that I hear you, Commissioner, and I am interested in, you know, improving any ways that we can communicate better. So I will be working on that, and George and I have been talking about that. So hopefully, we can have some conversations. So, thank you.
Member Barrett.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman. So I like to dabble in the federal subsistence side myself occasionally. And one thing that, and I may be wrong on this, but how does OSM know if subsistence needs are being met or not being met? There seems to be no formula. There's, it's, a group of people get together and say, our needs aren't being met. But how do you show that? Or they are being met?
Actually, implementing Title VIII of the NILCA, sorry, through the chair, is about providing for a meaningful opportunity, not necessarily ensuring that needs are met, but if there is an opportunity for some meaningful harvest, that's the directive, that's what we're working on. And that we also have a preference for federally-qualified subsistence users if we are in situations where resources are in decline, you know, or there's a contraction of opportunity. That's when you're going to see the federal subsistence board take action to take action to ensure that, first, there is some meaningful opportunity for federally qualified subsistence users. And if resources are so limited that we can't even provide for that, then we close. We close to everybody, right? So, there's different tools that we have to provide for a meaningful opportunity. And so, if we're talking, people use subsistence needs, our subsistence needs being met. We use that a lot. It's used even more on the state's side. And we have things like amounts necessary for subsistence. It's an important part of how the state is assessing what's happening with the local resources. We, it is good to hear that people are saying if their needs are met or not being met or how they might be changing. But really, what we're looking for is, is there a meaningful priority? Is there a meaningful opportunity for subsistence? And so, all of those discussions, you know, whether, and sometimes it isn't always just tied to abundance or a lack of abundance. It's tied to a number of different things and about people being able to continue their traditional way of life in a meaningful way. And sometimes, it's just so limited. What it means is, one person can harvest for a community and share that resource so that there is some means of carrying on knowledge about where to go, how to harvest, how to process, how to share, and get, as people say, just a taste.
Thank you. And, you know, that, on the federal side, they use a lot of this terminology, and he brought it up again, a meaningful opportunity, which is very vague and very open and hasn't been defined by anybody or any board. And it's kind of hard to understand when using that kind of subjective language. You know, how do you, you know, we've had a lot of haunts that eliminated non-ruly qualified person because subsistence needs weren't being met. It's on the record. And meaningful opportunities haven't been met, which is on the record. So, I just wonder, I struggle with listening to things like that and trying to say, "How do you get there?" You know, versus the ANS and the harvestable surplus on the state's side. It's data-driven. But thank you, that was a great presentation.
George, go ahead.
Sorry to, George Papasos, I want to back up a step. Just to put on record, I understand what the Commissioner's saying, understand what Director Scott's saying. I also understand a new supervisor during her first meeting is going to have a top-down effort to investigate every corner of our relationship with the state and how the process works because there's got to be room for improvement. And I just want to give you a heads-up on that. And it started from some racks. We're concerned that they're overlapping Board of Fish and federal subsistence board meetings, what have you. We're going to work closely with Ben Mulligan, that's Deputy Commissioner and the Assistant Director, Mark Birch, on getting some coordinated calendars and some different steps. And we've made some advances in communicating with the state to eliminate redundancy, to eliminate email fatigue. Twenty years ago, I bet you some of the, you don't even know this, we get 25 requests for the same piece of information. But we're going to work on making it more efficient, and this will be driven by the new director, which is exciting to me because that brings a breath of fresh air into the effort. And I will be definitely in open conversation with anybody who wants to contribute to concerns, and we'll work towards what we can find a solution to. When we're Health and Fish and Wildlife Service, the number-one complaint every year from the entire 500-person staff was, "Why can't we have close relationships with the state?" Why can't, well, maybe we're in a different position because we're in a different organization now. Maybe we can do something different. I don't know. But I'm going to push for it as hard as I can, and I have a supportive supervisor who's going to probably push me even harder. So, it's exciting. Just want to pass it along. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just have one last question. I got a phone call, I think, from your boss in DC when this change occurred, but I never really got a really good answer as to why the shift from the Fish and Wildlife Service and local Anchorage office to the Washington DC office, which, in my eyes, kind of disconnects subsistence users from 3,000 miles away and decisions being made into a higher office in DC. Why was that change made? And what was, it just, it always perplexed me to take it further away from the people that are impacted.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. Thank you, Commissioner. The Secretary of Interior, I think, even back as far as Salazar, so quite a few years ago, began doing listening sessions and tribal consultations across Alaska. Secretary Holland took that and reinvigorated that effort. What they heard from tribes and leaders and rural residents across the state was that they felt that there was influence by Fish and Wildlife Service on the subsistence program, and they wanted to see kind of a fresh, a new slate, a blank slate, a higher level, and maybe a more direct line of communication with the secretary's office, and faster decision-making. And we've already experienced that regulations are able to get published on time and not late, and so that's actually a good thing. We've experienced that when regional advisory councils send a letter to the secretary or the secretary's office, someone in the secretary's office, usually they don't get a response. Those responses are in the works now, and for the first time, I think, the councils will be seeing responses from the secretary's office. So, already, we're seeing efficiencies. And the direct supervisor of my position is someone in Washington DC, and so it's my mission and goal to make sure that person understands Alaska, understands subsistence, and understands rural America in Alaska. Right now, it's Eric Werwa. He is going to be out the door on January 20th. And so, it is yet to be seen who my actual supervisor will be. So, that'll be forthcoming.
If I could just follow up. You know, one of the big fears that the state had when that change occurred is that it was put into kind of an organization back in Interior that was more based on tribal law in the Lower 48 versus Anilka in Alaska. And one of our big fears is that it was now, tribal law in the Lower 48 is going to try to be the foundation for how we're managing resources in Alaska, which are managed under Anilka. So, we're going to be very carefully watching as your new boss comes in to make sure that they understand that Anilka is fundamentally different than treaty laws that drive a lot of the issues in the Lower 48. So, I trust that you'll be able to carry that message forward.
Yeah, 100% through the chair. Initially, the plan was to place OSM in the Office of the Assistant Secretary for Indian Affairs. And I think, due to that concern, it is not in Indian Affairs. It is in the Office of Policy Management and Budget. So, that's where we're located. And, yeah, we so far have been having a fairly positive experience with that. The other move they were considering was making this, the position that I'm in, a senior executive service position, which would make it a lot closer to the political winds, which the staff and the federal subsistence board members advocated against. And they listened, and so it's a GS position.
Well, we'll offer to pay for Anilka training for your new boss.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Hoffman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Crystal and Robin, for showing up. I just, since we touched on it a little bit, I just thought I'd bring it up, but this might not be the best place for it. But I'm from Unit 18, which is predominantly federal land. And I'm just asking this out of, because I experienced it. When we moved to federal enforcement for, or federally qualified users only, how do we, how does the feds differentiate between a non-federally qualified user and a federally qualified user in a place like Bethel where people are moving back and forth?
Thank you for that question. Maybe, actually, George, maybe you might be able to respond better than I.
Through the chair, Mr. Vice Chair. I will get ahold of the enforcement officers and see if I can get information to you, and I can present it sometime during this next meeting. I don't, I don't have a good answer. Besides, what I know, not in Bethel, but like in the Kenai Peninsula and some other areas, they check houses all year round to see who's, either their driveway's plowed or not for four or five months. And then, it's also where your voter registration. They have all kinds of secrets to figure out where you live and what you do, if you have ID on you. If you're out in the field and you're fishing with a net and you don't have an ID on you, I think that's not legal anywhere in Alaska. So, I understand exactly what you're saying because people come and go to summer camps and fish camps, what have you. But I can get a better answer for you.
A follow-up, thank you. And I don't want to get too deep into this, but I only bring it up because it does cause angst when we get moved to a situation like that where that's implemented and people start to, causes a rift internally in the town and people start to single each other out. He's not, you know. So, I just started thinking about it recently, and I thought, boy, to me, it doesn't seem like there's a clean way to identify these folks and what you do with them if you locate them.
And you have a, she said exactly. In some areas where they end up going to where there's only so many fish and do a community harvest, and the tribal administrator, you know, since we have a government-government relationship, they can issue the permits. And their uncle comes in who lives in, you know, Anchorage, who's down maybe four months a year. And his uncle, you know, "Give me a permit." "Well, no, I can't." It's like, "No, give me a permit. You're my nephew, do what I say." Well, we've had situations where people just walk away from the permitting process. "I can't do this. I'm not going to tell my uncle no." So, there are, you're exactly right. There are some, especially for folks that aren't there all the time. It's challenging, especially if it's family, especially if it's elders.
Any other questions? I hear none. I'd like just to say thanks a whole bunch for showing up. Thanks for taking these tough questions here, a lot of them off the cuff. I'm sure that all the talking that's started here is going to continue, continue to talk. And when you're in an environment like this, you've got to hear this, a bit of this banter back and forth. It's cool, it's important. It's something you can't have with the email. And once again, thanks much for showing up. The Board of Game process, I'm pretty proud of. It's very unique, and it's been set up for success. It gets stuff done. It produces something at the end of every meeting. So, and once again, thanks a whole bunch for showing up here, gals. Any other questions? Hear none, if it's okay. I'm going to take a recess for 10 minutes. Is that appropriate? Yeah, 10-minute break. Thanks.
Going to be our agenda item number three. We're going to hear from Member Loring here. He's going to give us an update on the Big Game Commercial Services Board. He's our attached liaison to that, that board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A while back, the Big Game Services Board acquired a Board of Game members part of their board. And when I was appointed to the Board of Game, Chairman Burnett at the time graciously passed it on to me, and I accepted it because I had quite a bit of experience working with that board in the past with a prior job. So I gratefully accepted it. And I've been going to all their meetings. I've attended all their meetings in person instead of telephonically. So that's been pretty good. And I've been able to participate in just about everything they do just because I had that background and knew quite a bit about the guiding industry and their laws and regulations. And so I just attended a meeting recently in December, their last meeting in Anchorage. And a couple of things came up that, that they're concerned about. And I'll get to this one a second. I just want to make sure everybody got this RC 002. And this is a, something that's put out by Department of Natural Resources. Has to do with bear baiting, and I'm not, I'm sure that they put this together in cooperation with Fish and Game. I'm not 100% sure they did.
No, I don't think they did.
But this talks about bear baiting and what their impression of how it applies on state land. You can all look at this and take a peek and see what it says. And this was presented by DNR at that meeting. So that's that. The other thing that they're really concerned about, of course, is the Eastman lawsuit. And the Eastman lawsuit, they believe is probably going to prevail, or at least they're taking a stance that if it does prevail, what they want to do is get a stand alone bill in front of the legislature this session that deals with the guide concession program. And also another big part of it that hasn't been mentioned too much is the Big Game Services Board is due to sunset this year. And part of the Eastman lawsuit deals with that sunset provision. It's, is in the same, the same bill that had the, the guide concession program also contained the sunset provision for the Big Game Services Board. So unless they do something about that, it's going to, that board will sunset. So they expect that should, shouldn't have any problem with that part of it being brought up in this current legislative session to keep the board in business. So they're concerned about that, of course. So they'll have to wait and see how everything flushes out, if they can continue with, with that concession program. And also another thing with the concession program is the big Dull Sheep Working Group, that's STASH and J. Coron. Part of their recommendations that are in the proposal that's going to be coming up on statewide meeting deals with the concession program being in place as a second and third year type thing and what's going to happen if that goes into place. There's some, quite a bit of things relying on this concession program. So they really want to work really hard to get that put back for the legislature. And of course, the funding part of it also is another issue. So that's their big one. The other really big one that came up was they're really concerned about some of the requirements to become a registered guide. One of them has to do with first aid. And right now, I think all they're required to have is a, maybe a first aid card from the Red Cross, a pretty minimal certification. And so what they decided to do, and they've actually adopted this, is going to require a wilderness first aid certification. And that wilderness first aid certification is quite a bit more robust certification that the guy's going to have to have in order to get registered, to get licensed. And so it's called wilderness and remote first aid. And I just looked it up here on the, on the website. And it's through the American Red Cross, but it's good for two years. It's 16 hours of course length, includes primary and secondary assessments, head, brain, neck, and spinal injuries, heat-related emergencies, hypothermia, altitude-related illness, allergies and anaphylactic, burns, bone and joint injuries, and wounds and wound infection. So quite a bit more robust than just a basic first aid card, which in order to even get into this course, you have to have a CPR card. So, so they took a big step there in upping the ante to become a registered guide. So that's a, probably a good thing. Everything else was just pretty much business as usual. They had a couple of other issues with unique verification codes and how they, how the Fish and Game computer software accepts those codes. And a UVC code is required when a non-resident hunter applies for a permit. It's issued to the guide, and it's kind of a privacy type thing. She's not supposed to share with anybody, but that code is then put into the system. And when there's a drawing permit for, say sheep that requires a guide, that UVC code has to be put into the system. Well, apparently that the system will accept any number, not necessarily the specific code that the guide has. Any, you can put in any number and it'll accept it. And so they're a little bit concerned about that. So I think somebody's from, from that board is going to get together with Fish and Game and see if they can't have some kind of updated code that recognizes an updated code or a current code. And really, that's about it. They only meet a couple of times a year. They're, they always, the way they work under Commerce is significantly different than how the Board of Game works as far as trying to schedule meetings in other places of the state. They will schedule meetings in Fairbanks and Anchorage. It's about the only place they go. They tried to get one in Kodiak, and they were denied. Their whole funding issue is different, and everything else is completely different than how the Board of Game operates. So even though they have a pretty, pretty big surplus of money, that money isn't available to the board to use as they see fit. So anyway, I'll continue with that unless anybody else here wants to take it over for me. It's a pretty interesting job to have. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Loring, for that. I know that Aaron loves to have you involved there, and I really appreciate you saying that you'll, you'll continue on that, on that road. All right, we're going to go on, oh, sorry, Commissioner.
Yeah, so the legislature, I know, passed the, the bill to have some kind of a guide concession program. And I know that's now being legally challenged by, by our former representative from the valley up there. And it's bringing into question whether or not that piece of it is, even though it wasn't the focus of the lawsuit, it's tied into that same bill that's being questioned. Did, did they discuss the implementation of that at all, and whether they're going to start prior to the resolution of that lawsuit? Or are they looking for the board or the department to take action?
Thank you, Commissioner. Through the chairman, the only thing that they really discussed was continuing with the guide concession working group that they, they have. And they didn't want to have a Board of Game member on that to actually sit on that, on that group. But they didn't say that they're going to go forward with anything, just waiting to see whether or not they even exist as a board, first of all. And then secondly, what the, what the outcome is on that lawsuit.
Okay, I've had a chance, just for your guys' information around the table, I talked to the DNR Commissioner. They have no intention right now of initiating that program pending the resolution of the lawsuit, number one. But number two, there was, the way that law got passed and signed into law, there was no fiscal note associated with it. So DNR, North Fish and Game, has any money to actually implement the statute at this point in time. And I know DNR, who's the primary driver of this census land use, has no intention of, of footing the bill for a couple hundred thousand dollars to get this off the, off the starting line and hopefully in place into the future until they get a fiscal note associated with it. But I think it's in the next year's budget. So.
Member Barrett.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dave, did Big Game Commercial Services, when they were discussing or reviewing the requirements to pass to get a registered guide license, the provision that you have to pass being able to score, I believe, five big game, North American big game species for Boone and Crockett, but you don't have to do it for Safari Club or any other measuring system. I was always curious to why a guide would have to know how to score Boone and Crockett.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Through your chair, that was discussed, and Boone and Crockett has a significantly higher threshold to actually become a certified scorer for Boone and Crockett than you do for the other, say, Pope and Young or Safari Club. And I don't think anything ever came in that discussion as far as any direction that they're going to go, other than it was discussed. And they realized that to become a Boone and Crockett official scorer is pretty tough. Not just anybody can do it.
Yeah, I, it wasn't that we were trying to be Boone and Crockett scorers, but you had to have been able to pass, you know, within a cer- certain amount of accuracy, basically green scoring, you know, a caribou, a moose, and maybe a deer or sheep or something. And I always was curious to why a guide would have to know something like that to, you know, provide an opportunity for his clients.
Yeah, I was not part of any discussion dealing with, with that issue. And it may have been discussed in the testing portion of it, because they do, they do testing as part of these meetings where they have assistant guides and registered guides actually sit down with board members and test. But I'm not part of that either. So I know the concession program is really, really important to the Big Game Services Board. And they put a lot of effort into it, trying to get it passed and dealing with the agencies and with the legislature, with APHA and all the other different groups. And, and I think it's their main, their number one priority to have something happen at this next session.
Any other questions?
And, Mr. Chair, in case you're ready to move on to that next report, just to clarify that, Miss Member Loring will continue to serve on the Big Game Commercial Services Board. And although this is an opportunity, if there's other interest. But one thing I would point out for the record too, is that the Alaska Statute 0854591 sets the membership for the Big Game Commercial Services Board. And one member is from the Board of Game who is chosen by the Board of Game and who does not hold a guide or transport license. So just wanted to mention that. If, but if someone else was interested too, this is an opportunity to express that.
That's a great point, Kristy. Thanks. Is anybody else interested in serving as the, the attachment to the Big Game Commercial Services Board from the Board of Game? I don't think anybody is. So if, if we're good with that, well, Mr. Loring will continue on that as that service. Yep. And we'll move on to our next agenda item. We're going to talk to Member Barrett about the Wood Bison Planning and Reduction Working Group.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, well, for an update, I guess, as far as I know, we do have bison and menthol flats. They are being watched over every day out there. There's volunteers, lots of volunteers have been working out there, and we always have a biologist or two. Things are looking really good. They're surviving well and acting really good on their new home range. But what I had here in RC 3, if you want to follow along, is I was able to go on a photo census in mid-June this last spring with the department. We've, you know, I've heard and seen, or seen the data from photo cen- photo censuses. So I, I asked if I could go along on something like that, and they, they accepted. And where I was able to go. And it was really super educational. The technology that the department's been able to afford and use to bring the, the best data that they can, you know, in front of this board especially, is really, you can really see the difference in, in the way they're counting, especially when it comes to counting bison and maybe like musk ox that herd up and, and caribou, where you can get a much more accurate number than human eyes. And in my little story I wrote here that, you know, there was three or four of us in that plane, and we all seen the same thing. But when we went back to town and looked at the photo censuses, we found some extra animals. And in small populations, that can, that can be significant. To find a few extra head of animals, seven, eight more head of animals is, is significant in small populations like that. And so, and that, and then having the coordination between a Fish and Game employee running the cameras and, and a Fish and Game employee running the plane, and the technology they have there to coordinate with the GPSs and the lines on the screens was just incredible to me. I was just like, you know, this is, you know, we're starting to see proposals ourselves with, you know, new modern technology to, you know, allow hunters or trappers or, or others to, you know, pursue opportunities for harvesting game. And, you know, so it was, it was just a real eye-opener to see that, you know, we're able to have technology like that, and we're able to use it and get that information out to the board members and to the public. So I thank them for letting me, you know, tag along.
Thanks. Any questions for Al from board members? I guess I'm going to say, Al, you've, you've done a lot of work up there, and you forged a lot of friendships, and you've earned a lot of trust. And would you consider staying on as a, on the Wood Bison program? Cool. Is anybody else interested in, in doing that? If not, well, Brett, thanks a bunch for that. Oh, yeah, Vice Chair Hoffman.
Thank you. If, for whatever reason, if Al can't make something, or if you need a backup, I would, wouldn't mind being on that list. Thank you.
All right, great. And then next, we're going to go to Vice Chair Hoffman. He's going to give us the sheep working group update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'm going to go over this pretty quick and, and brief here. But in essence, what, you know, we, we have a, we had a nine-member group, various user groups and stakeholders. Three of the nine-member group was Board of Game members, myself included, the now Chairman Jake Fletcher, and Jerry Burnett, who was the Board of Game Chair at the time. In the first meeting, when we met in June, Jerry was a board member, but in October, he wasn't. That's correct, Kristy, right? So when we first started the sheep group, working group, we had three Board, Board of Game members at the time in the June meeting. But, but when October came for the second meeting, Jerry wasn't on the board anymore. So I was just going to point out to everyone that he stayed, he still stayed on, but not as a board member. So he was one of the participants because of his, his knowledge and, and experience in that group. We felt it was valuable to keep him on. So we met in June, and in October, we had two meetings. We had a facilitator, Alistair Bath, and we engaged in in-depth discussions regarding sheep management in Unit 19C. And it was very good, robust conversations. The department was there. We, it, everything was, worked, went very well. And when we came down to discussing the, putting forward a recommendation, the, us board members, me and Jake, did not participate in that part. So in summary, what we ended up with was the, the committee basically put forward what ended up to be three major topics that I have down. Jake can tell me if I missed anything. But closing the season for, in 19C for 2025, except for the subsistence hunt RS 380. And the next year, 2026, 27, temporary draw hunt, which I won't go into all the details of how that breaks down. And then 2028, which is what Member Loring kind of alluded to about this guide concession program. And that's where, whether that happens or not depends if we meet again. And we may meet again in April 2026, depending on what happens. And this is what the, what the sheeping group, sheep working group is putting forward is a temporary, temporary solution for, for Unit 19C. And with that, I think, did I miss anything?
Nope. I think you covered everything, Vice Chair Hoffman.
And, and then the next meeting, if that happens, is April 2026.
Thanks. And with that, we, there's no meeting scheduled for that. Right now, Vice Chair Hoffman and myself are a part of that, that working group, and we, we lost Jerry. If, if and when we have another working group, I would definitely entertain myself being involved in that again. Member Hoffman, are you the same way?
Yes.
Cool. Would there be another board member that would want to be involved in that process? None right now. We could always bring it up at a later time. Oh, all right, great. Member Loring will, will join us in that. That's great. Does anybody else, everybody agree with that? I do. All right, thanks. All right, thanks. All right, we'll move on to our next thing. Oh, sorry. Yeah, Mr. Loring.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, one quick thing that came up. The Western Arctic Caribou Working Group requested a Board of Game member to give a presentation on the board process at their meeting back in December. So I was in Anchorage for the other meeting, and so I went over and did that. It was about an hour's worth of presentation. Kristi did have a slide presentation, already set PowerPoint, which had some of the basics on it. I just expanded on that quite a bit. So I did give a presentation about the Board of Game process, right from the statutes and all the way through the advisory committee process and the public involvement, everything like that. And pretty engaging with the, with the group. They were, they asked a lot of questions, and some were a little bit pointed, but generally it went good. And so I did give that presentation, about an hour's worth to the pretty large group and a lot of folks in the, in the audience, so. And apparently, feedback was, went out pretty good.
Commissioner.
Yeah, so I haven't really been closely following this, Dave, but, and Stash, I just, I'm trying to figure out where we are with recommendations coming out of this. I know we have sheep proposals that are deferred to, I think it's this meeting or the next meeting, March, okay. And some of those proposals have, are related to the guide concession program. And are there ways to move forward if the guide concession program isn't an element of the solution in the short term versus, or are they so integrated into the set of recommendations that if the guide concession program doesn't get implemented within the next year or two, there's still options that are being put forward to address some of the issues?
Great question, Commissioner. The way that the ACR that was submitted that ended up getting accepted is written, it said until a point, or until a point in time that the guide concession program can be implemented. So I believe definitely there's a way to implement it without having that guide concession program up and running. Any other questions, guys? Or girls? All right, we'll move on to our next thing. We have a joint board committee assignment. We just got done with a, with a joint board not too long ago. It's a pretty neat thing to be involved in. It's a whole different subject matter than we, than we have now, but it was really, really neat. We had a corner that was set aside for taqueta. I got a member of the Board of Fish in taqueta, so we had a whole corner set aside. But anyway, all that being set aside, we don't anticipate any, any work really needing to get done in this next year for the joint boards. But we typically have, you know, three folks that are, you know, involved in that, and I'm, I was one of them in the, in the last, in the last one. And I would definitely entertain anybody else who wanted to join me. Member Barrett? Great. Anybody else? We have two.
When is the joint board?
Kristi, could you remind me, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's, it'll be a number of years away, four or five years down the road. This is a committee that will meet with a, three members of the Board of Fisheries if there is, as like it says, joint board. If there's an issue that both boards would be interested, would, would need to discuss or give guidance on to, to the department or whatever, just that's a time when we might reach out to the, we might need to reach out to the joint board committee. I guess, struggling to think of examples, like process is usually, usually something. Last year at the joint board meeting, there was some discussion about how the boards modified their proposal form. And if something like that were to come up again, it's a process that both boards use, we would work with the committee members to discuss, you know, the potential change. So not expecting a joint board meeting, regulatory meeting for a number of years. Another reason the joint board meets is for the commissioner nomination process. So when there's a turnover in the commissioner, there's a, the joint board will meet to forward names to the governor. So this year, we're not expecting a lot of any, we're not expecting much activity at all from the committee, but something could come up.
Go ahead, Member Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess it's for Kristi. I thought, I thought the joint board meetings were more scheduled than what they were in the past.
That is correct. I'll clarify that. They are approximately every five years.
Yeah.
That being said, anybody interested in joining? Member Barrett, myself? All right, Member Bates, I love it. Thank you. We have, we have three board members willing to, to join that, that committee. Any other questions here before I move on to our agenda item number four, if we're talking about meeting dates? All right, so we're going, we're going to approve of the 2025 and 2026 meeting dates, the locations for the Southeast and the South Central Region meetings on page nine, guys, of RC one. We have some information there if everybody wants to take a minute or two to look at those. And if, Kristi, do you mind kind of walking through this next process?
Not at all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So correct on that? Page, oops, I think it's actually page, page seven. Oh, my bad. I put the wrong page number on there. Page nine is the memo to the board about the, setting the meeting dates and locations for the next meeting cycle. I'm just going to run over these bullet point items. These are considerations that the board has used in the past when setting the meeting schedule. So the meeting dates are based on a duration of past meetings needing to address the region's issues. The meetings begin on a Friday to accommodate the public for providing testimony over the weekend, which is a traditional practice by the board. The schedule takes into consideration the timing for the needs of the Department of Fish and Games, such as surveying, collecting, surveying data and collecting information if it conflicts with the hunting season or not, the legal review process for new regulations and publishing hunting, the hunting regulations handbook. The duration between meetings needs to be at least four weeks apart. And the options take into consideration the schedule of the Board of Fisheries. Their meeting dates have already been set for 2025, 2026. In the memo, I just listed the ones for 2026, since the board meetings for 2026 are expected to be, will likely be January and March. And then the board has the agenda change request deadline November 1. Once any agenda change requests are accepted, then we have to provide 30 days notice to the public of the topics you're going to consider. So that's actually another reason why we, we're not really looking at December for a meeting is because there's not enough time to properly notice the public. So turning the page, the next item, or the, yeah, the next page, skipping down to the options for the Southeast Region meeting. I've listed four options, and I've pointed out which ones overlap with the Board of Fisheries by at least one day. If, yeah, I'm totally not putting forward any options that are more overlap, because I think that, that just, I know that just doesn't work for the department and the advisory committees. So we have the Southeast Region meeting. It's typically been the January meeting. It's a five-day meeting. Further down on page eight, you'll see past locations. Ketchikan, Petersburg were the recent two locations. Prior to that, Juneau, Sitka, Ketchikan. Prior to Ketchikan in 2010, Wrangle was, was a location. I would also point out for Southeast that the number of proposals and number of testifiers is usually around, it's right around the same, 45 to 50 proposals, 25 to 30 witness highs. I guess we did have testimony of, number, we had 43 testifiers way back in 2010. So that kind of gives you some idea of what's, what may be on your agenda. We won't know the proposals, what the number of proposals will be for these two meetings coming up, because our proposal deadline is May 1, 2025. With regards to Southeast, I would point out also in the workbook, we received two public comments requesting the board go to Wrangle. One is from Chris Guggenbickler, who, and that's RC three, and another one is from the city and borough of Wrangle. That's, sorry, PC three and PC two. I won't, I'll stop there, and then the next set of options would be dates and locations for the South Central Region meeting.
Thank you very much, Kristi. I really like it whenever we go into the smaller communities. It's, it's really neat. You get a great feel, you know, for, for the public. But I have a question for you, Kristi. As far as like the physical note attached to all these locations, which one's the most affordable for you guys?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have those estimates pulled together. It's, we've always been able to accommodate the locations the board chooses. So I'm not, I don't, the board support section budget, we're not worried about not being able to fund that for the Southeast Region meeting. Juneau is, makes it easier, because I'd say that's more of a, of a hub and getting, we have more staff there, so less staff travel perhaps for board support section, possibly for the Department of Fish and Game, too. So there's a bunch of different factors that go into the cost for a meeting location with regards to travel, shipping equipment, meeting venue space. Some locations are quite a bit higher than others, typically Anchorage as a matter of fact, which actually balances with when we go out to other locations, meeting venue can be, the meeting venue cost can be less, which then makes it more affordable, because we end up having to spend more and travel, but the meeting venue is, doesn't cost us as much as Anchorage. Same with hotels. Hotels can be a bit more expensive in Anchorage.
Member Barrett?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Kristi, you said Wrangle was a personal comment was sent in, and what was the other place?
Through the chair. Two personal comments were, or two public comments were sent in, I think I want to say PCs two and three. One was from Chris Bickler with Wrangle, who's also the Chair of the Wrangle AC. The other one is the city of Wrangle. I think that one was PC two, city and borough of Wrangle.
And, and one other follow-up one. I thought we had mentioned this maybe in prior discussions about locations. Is Juneau on the table with, with those kind of dates, with the session being in?
That's a consideration. We did, the board met in Juneau, January 11th through 15th, and I think that was right before the legislative session started. I think they were kind of back to back. So it's certainly a lot more people in Juneau once session starts.
But it seems like those early January dates before the session starts were overlapping with Board of Fish meetings and holidays.
Like the January 9th through 13th, you have one day overlap with Board of Fisheries.
And even the 16th to the 20th has some issues. I'm just making note of that.
Any other questions, board members? Any, oh, go ahead, Director Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the location in Southeast will, obviously will be there, and it's great to move around. We did talk to our staff about timing-wise and some of the dates that, the dates that did come out on top are the 23rd through the 27th.
Do you may have any motions for where we're going to hold them or what the time is? Member Barrett?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move that we adopt January 23rd to the 27th for Wrangle. That'd be my, my proposal.
Second.
And so the follow-up on that, I see on our little list here that the board has, I don't think has, met recently in Wrangle, so it would be a new place. And we have an invite, or two of them, so I think that's a pretty safe bet.
Member Loring.
Thank you. Is four days long enough for this meeting?
Through the chair. I, the option, let's see, I would recommend five days. Oh, excuse me. Is it four days? For Southeast, we have, yeah, five days. And that's based on past meetings, except that one, the most recent one, 2023, you did cut it short by a day, so it was four. But I would suggest sticking with the five. We could always cut back, and then of course, if you finish early.
Those dates, those dates are good as far as timing for the number of proposals we should have. Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any other ideas about times or dates?
Or location.
Or location? Member Barrett?
Yeah, so we, we have, we have a motion on the table, so you don't really want to start changing it yet. Either vote it up or vote it down.
All right. I think we're ready to call the question.
Call the question, Mr. Chairman.
And then could you please poll the board?
I sure can, Mr. Chairman. On setting the meeting dates for the Southeast Region meeting, January 23rd through 27, and the location would be in Wrangle. Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Loring?
Yes.
Chairman Fletcher?
Yes.
Mr. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Bates?
Yes.
That motion carries seven to zero, six to zero, excuse me.
All right, next, we're going to talk about our South Central Region meeting. Do you need anything to add, anything to that, Kristi?
Sorry, for South Central?
Yeah, for South Central. If not, any discussion with board members?
Ryan has his hand up. I'll, I'll wait until after he speaks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to clarify, the intent is to have the work session the day prior to the Southeast meeting. I'm just scratching down notes of travel and stuff, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Member Loring.
Thank you. In consideration of these dates, I do have a conflict between March 8th to the 16th. If we can work around those dates, anything else would be great.
I would also like to add that the February 27th to the March 4th does not interfere with the start of the Iditarod. Any discussion from board members and places that we could, this meeting will take place Any motions on locations or timing? Member Barrett?
So the March 26th to 30th, that's still having a meeting for the South Central Region with a number of proposals that could be produced. That's enough time for Department of Law and Regulations to have things submitted for the Lieutenant Governor? No, it's right there. Oh. Well, scratch that question.
Sorry, Director Scott?
It's okay. I'll answer to anything. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this comes up every year, and I just want to mention it. You know, we, again, did talk to our staff, and spring break occurs in March, and the dates that came out on top for us were 320 to 325. The location, just like Southeast, will be wherever you need us to be.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm just kind of polling the board. So the March 20th to the 25th, hasn't, I haven't heard anybody have a conflict within that timeframe? So now we can pick out a place.
Yep. I think we've maybe just, it's got put forward that we're going to, going to meet the 20th through the 25th, but now we're looking for location.
And you might just want to do that in two seconds. Motions, perhaps, in case there's difference of opinion in the location, but not in the dates.
Sure. Member Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt a, a meeting date for the South Central Region meeting from March 20th to the 25th.
Second.
Any discussion with board members? If not?
Call the question.
Question's been called.
On that motion to set those, the meeting dates?
Your mic.
Oh, sorry. On that motion to set the South Central Region meeting dates, March 20th through 25th. Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Loring?
Yes.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Mr. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Bakedale?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
And that motion carries six to zero.
All right, up next, anybody have any ideas? All right, up next, anybody have any ideas of where, where we should meet? The location of Member Scott, or Ryan Scott, sorry.
I'm, I'm feeling like a, a real genuine part of it. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. Oh, wait, wait. I, I just, I wanted to throw out one, a, a different suggestion that's not on the list. One that we did discuss with Region 2, and that would be in Kodiak. As an idea.
Any board member discussion about Kodiak? Member Loring.
Thank you. That's a great idea. I'm just a little bit concerned about possible weather issues getting in and out. Maybe we ended up being delayed today or something. Other than that, it's a great, great place. I like it.
You're gonna have that in Wrangle too.
Christie.
And, Mr. Chair, members of the board, that's just, for the listing, public too. Um, page nine, I provide the, uh, historical information for the South Central Region. Interestingly, the last South Central Region meeting, March 2023, it was held in Soldova. We had a high number of proposals, 144, and we had 91 testa, 91 testifiers. My recollection on that is we had a high number of Kenai Peninsula-related proposals. But I know also we had some out-of-cycle topics for that meeting too that brought in other folks. And that's always a consideration when you pick a different location is that, um, a lot of members of, a lot of travel for a lot of members of the public and the advisory committees. Prior years, it's gone, it has, it's primarily been in Anchorage, uh, but it did, they did go to Kenai, um, in 2015. And then other, yeah, proposals range anywhere from 56 to, for those meetings, 56 up to 96 testifiers, anywhere from 46 to, in the seventies.
Vice Chair Hoffman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So with all that being said, just from my experience as a board member, most of the time when we have this, to me, people prefer Anchorage. And I generally agree with that, except for the fact when, uh, Ms. Tibbs just mentioned like Soldatna, we went there on a, because it was had, uh, heavy proposals, number of proposals for there. We, we did the similar thing to Kotsabee. We took it out of cycle because it was, it had, um, heavy topics on the, um, Northwest Arctic Curd. So I don't mind veering away from, you know, we, we generally tend to, uh, develop a cycle. And I don't mind, I, if we're gonna veer from it, I like it to be what, what we just talked about, about a heavy topic or, um, but with that being said, I, I think Anchorage is my choice.
Discussion on Anchorage, Member, Member Barrett.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think, uh, Kodiak would be a good place. I'm not opposed to going to Anchorage neither. I think there potentially could be some good topics to discuss about Kodiak issues that comes around from, you know, the last three years' cycle. We, you know, we ma, we passed some stuff in, in Kodiak that would, you know, a lot of social angst down there about transporters and deer hunting and such. But I'm not, I'm not beholden to Kodiak.
Further discussion from board members?
Member Loring.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you think that when the board picks a spot, let's, let's say it's Kodiak or wherever, that, that's before the call for proposals? So I think there'll be a whole lot more proposals put in for that area that wouldn't normally not be put in? Say have you anything from past cycles, Christie, that you've seen? Kind of hard question to answer.
It, it is. Yeah, I, I couldn't say that I would foresee that. Some, some things are obvious, like with the, the Arctic Caribou herd that Member Hoffman, uh, mentioned. We knew that there was, there was interest in that. It was, um, and, but then that too, I think the board hadn't been to Kotsabee for a while either, so I don't have a good answer for you, Mr. Loring.
Christie made it pretty easy when we had a community give us an invite. Nobody invited us to, for this one. Uh, Member Gardner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd be in support of Kodiak, you know, just the, the outreach to rural Alaska, uh, is a goal that we're trying to accomplish in the Southeast Region by going to Wrangle. And I do think that you may receive more proposals and participation by having us included in Kodiak Island. So the logistics kind of work both ways. I know that I've attended on the other side of the fence, flying from Kodiak to attend board meetings. So, uh, I would be in support of a Kodiak meeting.
Dr. Uida.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to note that with the overlap of one day with the Board of Fisheries on the 20th, you may want to consider whether or not that impacts who's sitting at the table from a departmental level, um, from a travel purpose and juggling that, but that's all I wanted.
Do we know where the board meeting, uh, meeting for the Board of Fish is at that time?
I believe so, that, I believe that, I'm pretty positive that's in Anchorage. Is it somewhere, yeah. That, um, Board of Fish, March 17th through 20th, it's a statewide finfish meeting. And yeah, their statewide meetings are typically in Anchorage.
So just stating the obvious, the, the travel burden for the state would be a lot less if we kept it in Anchorage.
Member Barrett.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I guess my question is to Dr. Uida. Having that one day overlap, um, how essential is, uh, division of subsistence on the very last day or the very last two days of a Board of Fish meeting?
Thank you. Through the chair, um, Member Barrett, it depends on the order for that meeting and what proposals are on, are slated, but we are happy to make it work either way. I just brought it up as a point for consideration, that's all. Thank you.
All right, board members, we have two locations put forth. One's Kodiak, one's Anchorage. Member Barrett.
So I'll give it, I'll give it a stab. And nobody's obligated to vote for it if they don't want to. But I move that, uh, we have our, our, uh, South Central meeting in, uh, city of Kodiak.
Second.
I'll, I'll just.
Go ahead, Member Barrett.
You know, for reasons that, you know, a couple of board members had stated that, um, there doesn't seem to have been re, in recent times, a, a meeting on Kodiak. I think the people in Kodiak and, and, uh, you know, the adjacent island of Fogniac would appreciate, uh, having a board meeting down there. And it does, you know, reach out. We've had multiple meetings in Anchorage. I think this would at least give the, the island of Kodiak and of Fogniac a chance to, uh, you know, host a Board of Game meeting and give it a shot.
Thanks for that. Uh, Mr. Loring.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Barrett. This might be out of order, but Christie, do you think this Kodiak have the facilities to, uh, house a Board of Game meeting? As far as you know?
Through the chair. Uh, they sure do. The Board of Fish met their last, last meeting cycle. I forget which month, if it was January, but yeah, they had a new meeting venue and they certainly had co, uh, hotel accommodations and.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Press on someone out.
I'll also add, the council has meets down in Kodiak on a off and on basis, so they have a brand-new facility. It's very nice.
Great. Any more discussion? If not?
Call the question.
Question's been called. Uh, Christie, do you think you could poll the board for the meeting location in Kodiak?
I sure, I sure will. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Starting with, um, Mr. Garner.
Yes.
Mr. Bakedill?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Loring?
Yes.
Chairman Fletcher?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
All right, we've kind of worked through all of our agenda items we had set for this, uh, this meeting here. Is there any other further business they want to bring up? Mr. Loring, Dave Loring.
Uh, Mr. Christie, could you just, uh, summarize the dates and locations for both meetings one more time, of course?
Absolutely. So for the Southeast Region meeting, the location selected was Wrangle, January 23rd through 27th. And one day work session the day prior. For the South Central Region meeting, March 20th through 25th, location Kodiak.
Just clarification though, the works, the work session will be on the 22nd then? Or is it actually on the 23rd? 22nd?
22nd, correct. And, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, once the call for proposal deadline has passed and we put the proposal book together, if we do get a flood of proposals, we can, I can come back to the board and adjust, ask for, uh, additional day or, or what, if needed, for one of the meetings, which I think was the case for that last South Central Region meeting.
Great. Thanks for that. Like I said, I think we've worked through all of our, our items that we're, we intended to in this, this particular meeting. Does anybody else have any other further topics they want to discuss? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
The meeting's adjourned. Can I do that? I don't want to get a second? Okay. We're adjourned then. Thanks.